Okay, let me have the roll call, please, Gerald.
Commissioner Aragon, and so just for the record, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Commissioner Aragon has been activated by the Air Force and is on duty this evening, so he won't be joining us. Commissioner Duffel?
Present.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Present.
And Chairman Buchanan?
Present. Okay, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I was gonna have Commissioner Aragon do it, because he hasn't done it for a while, but I'm gonna leave it to Commissioner Duffel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Please pledge allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda, and I'm gonna recognize our city attorney, Jennifer Mederi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, and also to everybody out there in the audience. We are going to be pulling item number five. Item number five was the proposed dog breeding ordinance. We're pulling it because we got a lot of, a lot of comments, especially that from the American Kennel Association, American Kennel Club, excuse me. So at this point, we're just, we're gonna pull it, we're gonna go back to the drawing board a little bit, look at this. If, which, which this means, just, just for everybody in the audience as well, which means that the status quo stands currently, dog breeding is not allowed as a, as a home occupation, and that's what, what it will stand. So we're just not gonna be moving forward with anything this evening. If and when we do move forward with an ordinance, we will ensure that it gets properly published, noticed, et cetera, so that people will have plenty of time and an opportunity to be heard on the matter if and when it comes before the Planning Commission again. So with that, Mr. Chair, I recommend that we pull item number five from the agenda, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, before there's a motion recognized, I have a question for the city attorney. This is Commissioner Duffel.
Certainly.
The, the notice that we posted, did, did we miss some legal deadlines? Is that why we're pulling this, or are we just being friendly?
No, the reason why we're pulling this is because staff, including myself, need to go back and kind of look at what the AKC said, as long, with, with other comments. So currently, we're gonna pull it because, obviously, dog breeding is not my specialty. I don't breed them, so we're just gonna go back and to kind of the, the drawing board and see where we are. We have not missed any legal notice publications or anything like that whatsoever. But at this point, staff is not ready to move forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the agenda excluding item five?
I make a motion to approve the agenda excluding item five.
Thank you, Jim. I can go ahead and second that. So any, any more questions, comments?
No, sir.
All right, then let's move on to the vote. We'll use a roll call vote.
Commissioner Duffel?
Nay.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Yes.
And Chairman Buchanan?
Yes, but I believe we need three votes to move on. Is that correct?
No, just a simple majority, Mr. Chair.
On this? Okay, good. I know that on other items that we need, there are gonna be times when we need three votes. But, okay, that's good. Okay, thank you.
The motion passes with Commissioner Duffel opposed.
Okay, great. Okay. Let's move on to the minutes for May 12, 2020. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Is there any discussion about the minutes?
Oh.
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, someone then moved to approve the minutes as written.
So move, Commissioner Duffel?
Do we have a second?
I seconded.
Thank you, Commissioner Nindell. With that, let's go ahead and do another roll call vote.
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, public comments. At this time, pursuant to state law, any person may comment on an item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record. Do we have any public comments, Gerald?
We have one person that registered, registered to speak on a non-agenda item. His name is Jim Beryl, however, I do not see him as an attendee at this time. If you'd like, Mr. Chair, we can circle back at the end of the agenda to see if he's joined at that time.
Okay, we always give an opportunity at the end to see if we missed anyone, so that would be fine. Let's go to the first public hearing then. Request for one-year extension of time to the following conditional use permit number 27-16, and that's applicant Frank Frog, and I'm sure I pronounced that wrong, I'm sorry, and conditional use permit number 37-17, Alexander Guzman. Do we have staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So the following is, like you said, a request for a one-year time extension for CUP 27-16 and CUP 37-17. Conditional use permit 27-16 was previously approved for a single-story cannabis building totaling approximately 20,492 square feet on a 1.26-acre parcel located on the south side of San Jacinto Lane, approximately 1,300 feet east of Little Morongo Road in the light industrial zone. CUP 37-17 was also previously approved for two buildings totaling approximately 15,542 square feet on a 1.26-acre parcel located on the north side of Polymer Lane, approximately 500 feet east of Little Morongo Road in the light industrial zone. With that said, on December 12, 2017, the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit 27-16, and on April 10, 2018, the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit 37-17, and then doing so adopted the MND for each project. With that said, staff would like to recommend that the Planning Commission grant a one-year time extension for conditional use permit number 27-16 from December 12, 2019, to December 12, 2020, and conditional use permit number 37-17 from April 10, 2020, to April 10, 2021. And I would also like to note that these items were placed on hold due to COVID-19. I just wanted to state that for the record. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, I also would like to note for the record that we did receive a letter from Mr. Guzman that was included in our packet. It's on the record. Okay, excellent. So with, with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public, or I, first of all, entertain questions from of staff from the Planning Commission. Anybody have questions?
Just want to clarify one more time. I know it's already been stated for the record, but just for clarification for the public, both of these items expired and could not come back to the Planning Commission closer to their expiration due to COVID-19, correct?
That is correct. Staff had put non-urgent items aside because we didn't know how these Zoom planning commissions were gonna go, and so our direction originally was just to bring urgent items that needed to develop right away or needed to get in under a certain deadline, so we've held on to them until now. So it is just due to COVID that, the reason that they're so late from their expiration date.
Thank you very much, Rebecca.
Okay. At this point then, Jim, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, good, neither do I, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Is there any testimony from the applicants? Hearing none, I'll move on. Is there any public testimony?
Yes, we do have one person, and that is John Berry.
Okay. We hear from Mr. Berry, please.
Yes, I'm here, but I, I don't have no comment on this particular matter at, at this point in time, or actually, on this matter at all, so.
All right, so thank you. Any other public testimony?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with that, there's no need for rebuttal. So we're gonna close the public hearing. Planning Commission discussion and questions of staff. Do we have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Jim?
No.
Okay, I don't either. So with that, can we have a vote for approval of conditional use permit number 27-16?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Duffel here. I'll take these motions one at a time. I've got
Thank you.
For each. I would like to move for approval of a one-year time extension for conditional use permit number 27-16.
All right, excellent. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, do we have any further discussion?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So Joe had to have a roll call vote. Let's go ahead and vote.
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Mr. Duffel, you're up.
Thank you very much, sir. I would like to motion for approval of a one-year time extension for conditional use permit number 37-17.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second that.
Thank you so much. So is there any further discussion? Let's go ahead and call a roll call vote.
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Commissioner Nindell?
Aye.
And Chairman Buchanan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item number two on the agenda is an ordinance of City Council, the City of Desert Hot Springs, California, amending section 17.08.120 manufactured homes of Chapter 17. Dot eight residential districts entitled 17 zoning of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code regarding regulations from the installation of manufactured homes. Or, I'm sorry, regulation for the installation of manufactured homes. We have the staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman, Commission. The regulation of manufactured homes is largely governed by state law. However, it does give a little discretion to local entities under specific circumstances. One of those circumstances is the age of the manufactured home. This ordinance would limit the age of the manufactured home, which may be installed in a residential district to promote the aesthetic quality of neighborhoods, minimize the devaluation of communities due to repair costs and upkeep, and to maintain safe building standards for manufactured homes. In addition, the ordinance would show that manufactured homes comply with the architectural standards that are the same as single-family homes, thereby creating a nice aesthetic, aesthetic within the community. So staff is proposing to put a 10-year age on the manufacturer home as part of this proposal. So all applications would have to be, have been manufactured within 10 years from application of building permit. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Okay, do we have questions?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, this Commissioner Duffel, I do have some questions.
Certainly, Commissioner.
Rebecca, you said that they've gotta meet the same design standards as a stick-built home, if they're gonna come in. I know that on manufactured homes, things like roof pitch and sometimes even wall depth is different than a, a stick-built home. Has staff been able to look into that to, to, to properly approach that area so that we don't prevent or discriminate against manufacturers coming, coming in due to, say, maybe a roof pitch being off by 10% from a stick-built home?
So staff does not have standards specific to roof pitch? So therefore, since we don't have a roof pitch standard for single-rate stick-built homes, we don't have a standard for manufactured homes. We just look and make sure that the, if it's a, you know, obviously, we have some modern homes out there with no roof pitch, and then we have some with roof pitches. Usually, we're looking more as, you know, is it all, you know, is the whole block modern? Or is the whole block Mediterranean? Then we would want to make sure that the manufactured home had that style. So it's not specific to pitch or thickness of the walls, but more the design standards that we do have in our code, and, and roof pitch is not one of them.
Okay, so say, and, and this is more, this is more clarification from questions that I've been asked from members of the community. Say, an individual buys a vacant lot on a residential street that has nothing but Santa Fe-style built stick homes on it. If someone comes in and wants to put a manufactured home on that street, would they have to then go out and choose something that would be similar to what's already there?
Similar as in Santa Fe-style, that would be correct. We, it would, it would need, you know, if, if they all... Yeah, yes, the answer is yes.
I get you. You've answered my, you've answered my question. That, that's the only questions I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jim, what do you have?
Just one question. If, if the manufactured home doesn't quite match the style or appearance of the rest of the homes on the street, what is, what recourse does the city have? I mean, do you just simply not approve that particular manufactured home?
So that's correct. If they were to apply to the building department and it didn't match, then we would put that as the comment, that the requirement in our code is that they do batch the character of the neighborhood. Usually, to be honest, usually, we don't see these in well-established neighborhoods where they're all built a similar house. Usually, we see them in infill scenarios where it is a complete mix of housing. We haven't needed to deny a manufactured home in the time I have been here because there's one modern house, there's one contemporary house, there's one Mediterranean house, there's one Mission-style house, I'm all in, you know, within a block or two of, of the houses. And so we haven't seen them go into established communities built by a developer kind of thing. They're usually all infill.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I have one other question, though. Because this is a state law behind all this, does, does the state prevent homeowners associations from saying, no way in, no way do I want manufactured house in our development?
Would that be a question for Jennifer, where those CCNRs could restrict manufactured homes? The city would not be able to.
Actually, that's a really good question. I'm looking right now at the code, at the government code, and it actually is silent with respect to any kind of HO, you know, compliance with HOA standards. I would think, and, and, and forgive me, it's a little bit of a guess on my part, which, which is always fun to do on the record, but I, I would think that the government code would likely trump some kind of HOA standard. The governor, this governor in particular, at least in the past 10 years, we've seen just slews, just tons of, of housing laws kind of come into place because there is such a housing crisis and shortage within the state of California. So that would be my educated guess at this point, but it is silent, the code's silent on it.
Sounds like it'd be a legal issue then, at some point. Electrical and plumbing standards seem to be the same, correct?
So those are all done because the house is manufactured and certified each, by HCD. It is all reviewed and certified by them. Does the city does not look at the internal plumbing of the house or anything like that because it comes as a packaged unit already certified?
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, anything else, anybody?
Mr. Chair, from my experience, the, the plumbing on manufactured homes is quite a bit different from the plumbing that are in stick-built homes. However, they are very sustainable materials. I had lots of experience with them here in the desert, and they don't seem to, they, they don't seem to have a problem holding up to our high temperatures.
Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Duffel. I have experience with this. My parents had a manufactured home in Arizona for many, many years, and I did a lot of the upkeep on that myself over the years and found it to be pretty much not exactly the same as stick-built home, but pretty much up to standard. But I thought I'd ask the question because I think it's important for people to hear it. Okay, anything else, Jim?
Oh.
You know what, I just didn't think, one more question, Mr. Chair, and I'm sorry for the late question. But is there already a requirement at the state level, or is this something that we would need to incorporate on a local level, the requirement of earthquake strapping?
Good question.
So again, I believe all of it is through HCD. They, you know, as it relates, there are state-approved foundation systems, and those have to just match what's installed. But again, those are all approved through the state. So anything related to earthquake safety would all be through HCD.
So that we, we could not, I guess this question would be for Jennifer. We could not put a stipulation in there requiring earthquake straps, then, even though we're directly on top of the fault line?
Yeah, at this point, I don't necessarily see a way to do that because the, all of the foundation systems, as Rebecca was saying, it's all governed by HCD. I could, I could check, the, the law on this is actually quite broad, and that was not something that I had a chance to look into. There, there are a lot of HCD regulations on it. I'm happy to take a look at, at that specific issue. This would have to go to council anyways, at least between now and council. And if that's something that the Planning Commission wanted to do, if we were legally able to do so, we could get it in time for council. But I would have to take a, a very specific look. My guess is probably not just because HCD controls the foundation systems, but I have not specifically looked at that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anything else, Jim?
Nothing.
Okay, I don't have anything. With that, let's open the public hearing. So I'm opening a public hearing, and is there any public testimony on this?
We have, nobody registered for this side, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is anybody online who wants to speak on this issue?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to discussion and questions of staff. We've already questioned the staff quite thoroughly, actually, but do we have any discussion on this issue? Richard?
Mr. Chair, I, I don't have any more discussion, but if staff could help me out with formulating a motion to incorporate looking into the earthquake strapping prior to the council meeting as a, if, if it's legally possible, including that in, as a recommendation, I, I would be ready to, to make a motion.
So I'm hearing a motion for the Planning Commission to recommend to City Council approval of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs, California, amending section 17.08.120 manufactured homes of Chapter 17.08 residential districts of Title 17 zoning of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code regarding regulations of installation of manufactured homes with an additional recommendation to have staff review any allowance for earthquake strapping, and should the state law allow us to add those requirements, that they be added before City Council?
And that would be my motion.
That's an excellent motion. Who, who would like to second it?
I will second that.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, any further discussion?
Just a thank you, Mrs. Dimming, for getting that motion out there for me. I greatly appreciate it.
That's a beautiful job, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, and with that recommendation, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Nindell?
Aye.
And Chairman Buchanan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, we're gonna move on to item three. Item three is an ordinance in City Council, the City of Desert Hot Springs amending section 17.12.030 land use district development standards of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to reflect development standards for its new zoning designations pursuant to the new general plan update. Let's go ahead and do the staff report. I understand this is a cleanup of our, our, our new plan, which we're gonna see a lot of these, I think, only because it's so extensive, and there's always gonna be, you know, a, a dot, an I not dotted or a T not crossed somewhere. But go ahead. Who would like to do the staff report?
I'll, I'll go ahead and do the staff report. Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. As stated, you know, we recently adopted a general plan, and government code requires us within a reasonable amount of time to update our zoning code in compliance with the general plan. We have tried to do most of that at the same time, like by, for example, adopting the zoning map at the same time as adopting a general plan map. However, there are gonna be sections, as mentioned, that will have to come back over time. We are hoping to bring back a, over the next year, a complete new zoning code, if we can manage it, so that everything will be nice, new, and complete. However, there are projects that are interested in developing, and one of the things that they can't do without developing is knowing their setbacks and building height. So this ordinance gives you, is proposing development standards for all of the new zoning codes, that zoning designations that were approved as part of the zoning map, and includes the requirements to match the general plan for items like floor area ratio, and then puts in requirements for setbacks and building height and things like that. For the most part, we copied other sections already in the code that are similar to the types of zones we're looking for, with the exception of the commercial highway and the commercial business park, which we are proposing a 50-foot maximum building height because those are the, the areas where we hope to get maybe some future offices or medical facilities that would be taller than the other commercial zones in our general or downtown commercial. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Excellent. Do we have any questions of staff from the Planning Commission?
Not for me.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions either. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Do we have any public testimony on this, Gerald?
Yes, we do have one speaker, I believe, Mr. John Berry.
Mr. Berry?
Good evening, once again, Commissioners. Actually, only
Actually, only have one, one comment on this particular matter and that is that we do have a planned future development in one of the new zoning districts. And again, commending city staff because they have been very, very good in looking at all of the things that are going to impact, especially in these new zoning districts. And so we've been very pleased with it and that's really the only comments that I have at this point in time.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other comments?
No, we do not, Mr. Chair.
All right, great. At this point then, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll have discussion, questions of staff. Any discussion or questions of the staff of the commission?
Mr. Chair, this Commissioner Duffel, I'd like to motion for approval of staff's recommendation.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Nindell. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Duffel, I would just like to echo our public comment, Mr. Berry's comments to staff. I think you've done an absolutely wonderful job, everybody behind the scenes on this. Your eyes are to the future and I for one appreciate that. Thank you.
Excellent. I'll second that, actually. Okay. With that said, do we have a motion to approve? I think we already did that, right?
Yes.
Well, all right, so let's go ahead and go toward two of them.
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Nindell?
Aye.
And Chairman Buchanan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next one is number four, an ordinance to city council of the city of Desert Hot Springs amending section 17 dash 40 S 200 projections, construction and equipment permitted in, into setbacks of title 17 zoning for the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to clarify what projections can be encroached into setback areas. And this appears to me to be another cleanup, but I'll call for the staff report and see where we are with it.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. This is another cleanup, however, it's not necessarily directly related to the general plan and zoning update. This is simply one that myself and staff have, have realized that it's not very clear and could be interpreted in a very large way and wanted to make sure that we are protecting people's interests and properties. And so this is a cleanup just to clarify, you know, within the setbacks, what can encroach into the setbacks. Usually, for example, when you build a house, we measure to the wall because the roof overhang can encroach into the five-foot setback. So if you've got a five-foot side setback, you basically can build the wall of your house to that setback, but yet your overhang is a foot or two into it. Sometimes you might have a chimney, if you've got a fireplace, that pops out from the wall. Again, we want to allow these projections and not have to make the house smaller. And so we're just cleaning this up so that it's easier to understand and very clear on what can project and how far it can project into the property line and how much clear space needs to be at the property line. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, are there any questions?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Nindell?
No, not at this time.
Okay, I have none either. Okay, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And do we have any public testimony on this?
No, we do not, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anybody out there want to speak on it? Don't speak. Okay, moving, moving along, I'm going to close the public hearing and discussion and questions of the staff. Do we have any questions of the staff?
No, sir.
Me either. Any discussion? Nope. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to motion to recommend to the city council that they approve, the approval of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Desert Hot Springs amending section 17 dot 40 dot 2000 projections, construction and equipment permitted into setbacks of title 17 zoning of the Desert Springs Municipal Code to clarify what projections can encroach into setbacks.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Duffel, do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Nindell. Okay, any further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote then.
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Nindell?
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you very much. Item number five has been removed.
Yes.
So we'll move on to item number six.
Mr. Chair, I see some people that might have joined after the action was taken under approval of the agenda to withdraw the item from the agenda. So I think it would be prudent to just explain that to those who might have missed what happened.
Okay. Can I call on you again, Jennifer, to?
Yes, definitely.
Explanation?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. We have polled item number five, which was the dog breeding ordinance for a couple of reasons. Right now, staff is not in a position to move forward with the ordinance. And we received lots of comments. We also received letters from the American Kennel Club. And so at this point, we're pulling it, you know, so that we could kind of look everything over. If and when it does come back, everybody will be notified. We will ensure to publish it and notice it pursuant to state law, as we always do. And the, the vote, if you would like, as well, when we did pull it, it was a 2-1 vote. And with that, though, it did pass and therefore the item has been polled. So if there's anybody who would like to speak on, on that item, obviously it's polled, so there's nothing really to talk about. That, that's, that's all.
Right, if there are the comments, I would allow them.
Sure.
I believe that that is prudent. Gerald, do you have anybody who wishes to speak at this time?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
I'm sorry.
Since we wanted to pull this item from the agenda, any comments that would be for this item would be moved to general comments, would they not?
Correct, that's exactly what I would.
I would think, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, but I want to give people an opportunity, so we will open public comments right after we deal with item number six. So thank you very much for that. That, that's a good approach. Okay. Item number six, Coachella's Specific Plan Amendment and Addendum to the mitigated Negative Declaration, MND. And the recommendation is to continue to July 14th, 2020, Planning Commission meeting. Can we have the staff report on this one, please?
Yes, staff is recommending continuance. It was found that the mailing labels provided by the applicant had an error in them and therefore we must continue this item because not all of the required property owners within 300 feet were notified. We did include, as an exhibit to this item, the specific plan and design guidelines to give commission and the public additional time to review the proposed changes. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Okay, I, I don't have a question, I have a comment. You know, because I'm technologically challenged in some ways, old school, as it were, I'd like to print things out, big exhibits. However, this one was just filled with blank pages. And what I thought was a lot of repetition, so I didn't print it out. However, I did have an opportunity to review it because I believe Commissioner Nindell, and I'm not sure about Commissioner Duffel, but I think we saw this in 2019 as an update. And so we had an opportunity to review some of the stuff we've already seen and some of the new changes. So it was very helpful to have that exhibit. Thank you. Anybody have anything else? Okay, with that, do we have a motion to continue?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion to continue this item to the July 14th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, please.
Thank you so much, sir. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Mr. Chair, this is a question if we may, before we take a vote, just for the record, we, if we could have that motion be made after the opening of the public hearing, just in case there was anybody here, I don't know, Gerald, if there was anybody here to testify? Not, okay, great, go ahead with your, with your roll call then, for the continuance.
Okay, this is interesting. It's not on our agenda listed that way, however, I'm happy to entertain any public comments. So do we have any public comments or testimony on this issue?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Then I, I don't know if I officially open a, a public hearing or not, I don't think I do.
It was, it will consider it opened, no, no comment while it's opened, you go ahead and continue the item to the date certain of July, what was it? I'm sorry, July?
July 14th, 2020.
Thank you.
Okay, splendid, that's a nice technicality, thanks, Jennifer. It's always good to have her. So with that.
I repeat my motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes, we don't have any further discussion? Can we go ahead and make a vote?
Commissioner Duffel?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Nindell?
Aye.
Chairman Buchanan?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on quickly, I hope, to plant, chair and planning commission member reports. I appreciate the efforts on the part of the city clerk and the entire city staff to set up this communications program so that people can directly contact us when they have issues with things that we're hearing, so that we can actually hear from people. And I appreciate that and look forward to that setup. I don't have anything else. Any of the other commissioners have anything?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Jim, no. Okay, committee development, development director report, excuse me.
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to have an opportunity for public comments. Does anybody want to speak about anything? Any public comments coming in and we'll be happy to hear them.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so we can start with Mr. Jim Barrow, who registered to speak under general public comments, who wasn't present earlier. He's here now, so we can see if he.
Certainly.
Mr. Barrow, you have the floor.
I still see him as muted, Mr. Soriano.
I think he has to unmute on his end, I can try to unmute. Okay, yeah, he has to unmute on his end. I'm not sure if he's any, having any technical difficulties, but we can move on and then circle back to him, if that's okay, sure.
Certainly, let's go ahead and, does anybody else have a public comment?
I'm going to call on Tabitha Davies.
Hello. I'm hoping you guys can hear me.
Yes.
So I wanted to discuss the fact that we currently have a no breeder allowed ordinance in the city of DHS, it's different from the proposed ordinance. Currently, animal control is unable to enforce those who are breeding and those who are selling underage puppies. So California state law says that dogs have to be a minimum of eight weeks of age in order to leave the home without veterinary medical clearance. And we have people that we've screenshot that are openly admitting to selling six and seven-week-old puppies without that clearance. They're selling them in Facebook Marketplace groups, they have no issues advertising. Animal control's been out to some of these people's homes and they can't enforce it. I don't know how we go about getting something on the agenda to discuss, you know, changing it so it is more enforceable. But I think that that's definitely something that should be considered because I know, I look at my clients' dogs, I'm a certified professional dog trainer and associate certified dog behavior consultant, and I'm the chairperson for the education committee for the Association of Professional Dog Trainers. And I wish I didn't have a job because my line of work is dealing with the fallout of lack of proper early socialization, poor genetics and poor breeding. I'm usually somebody's third or fourth call in dealing with severe significant behavior issues. And currently, in the United States, dogs are far more likely to be euthanized due to behavioral disorders, which are extremely heightened by being sold underage, like significantly. And they're more likely to be euthanized by that than contracting a communicable disease, even things that are considered terminal. So I look at the ordinance we have and the animal control, animal care guidelines that we have, and I feel that we need to have a, and I'm, I'm not saying anything negative, I think our animal control is absolutely fantastic. You know, Stephanie, Kat and Ken are just awesome at what they do and they really truly care about all the animals, but there's only so many of them that go around and they only have so many hours in a day. So when their hands get tied, it hurts our community because people who do work all day and come back home are actually trying to go out of their way to help the animals that are in need in our community, some of which are those puppies. That was it. And I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Tabitha, very much. Okay, who's next?
Okay, next I'm going to call on Janet McAfee.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to thank each of you for this opportunity to give us a chance to speak on this very important issue. Again, my name is Janet McAfee and I audited, of course, in animal law at the California Western School of Law. I live here in the Coachella Valley for the past 14 years and I've been rescuing dogs for the past 11 years. For the past eight years, I'm a staff writer for the Coachella Valley Weekly Magazine and every week I write about animals, mostly dogs and cats, sometimes rabbits, horses and other animals. But I do a lot of research for my columns and one of the things that I've discovered is I use, try to look up a lot of statistics and some really, one really shocking statistic, and this is for those who don't care about the plight of homeless animals, each of us are taxpayers and it costs an average of $425, and that's mostly local taxes, not federal, for taxpayers to pay for animal control services, to go out with their trucks and pick up stray and unwanted animals, bring them into the shelter, house them, feed them, maybe provide a bit of veterinary care, and sadly, in many cases, they end up euthanized. And it's, it's a very tragic situation for those of us that love animals. Here's another statistics, approximately 35% of the animals in shelters and rescues are pure breed animals. So there's no need for anybody who wants a puppy of any breed to go to a breeder where they're going to spend thousands of dollars when they can rescue and save the life of a dog in a shelter. I just, I want to back up what Tabitha said about your Desert Hot Springs shelter. I know Kat and I've talked to Stephanie. I know Kat and I've talked to Stephanie. In fact, I just got done writing an article about one of your Desert Hot Springs dogs called Obi Wan. They named this little guy, he was found late at night by Stephanie at the side of the road in Desert Hot Springs with a injured leg. The leg later had to be amputated. But the staff named him Obi Wan because in spite of his injuries, he wagged his tail the whole time, and he was so optimistic.
Oh, wow.
I can send each of you, it's coming out in a card. I'd be happy to send you a copy. It's being printed as we speak. So it's a really uplifting story about the hard work that your shelter does. They actually took Obi to the emergency vet on Christmas Eve, where he was initially treated. It's just an amazing tale. Inspires a lot of us to look out for these homeless dogs, for dogs that are disabled. So I'm just really impressed with what's going on in Desert Hot Springs. I'm impressed by the fact that your city has passed this ordinance already to protect our animals because sadly, we're dealing with human crises right now, as you know, with our, in our entire country. But it's really a crisis every day for homeless animals here in the Coachella Valley and in many, many communities throughout our country. There's too many dogs, and we're just not able to adopt our way out of the situation. Sadly, when you put in a profit motive, of course, you know, many of the breeders, you know, when it comes time to provide vet care for these dogs, do they provide it? Do they do the shots? Do they do the spay and neutering? Well, no, they don't spay and neuter. That's a given. We also know it's a largely unregulated industry. So when a dog is sick, what happens to it? Does it just slowly die? What happens? Are they gonna go out and spend, you know, thousands of dollars like what was spent on Obi Wan? Somehow, I don't think so. You know, there's more stories. I could go on. I know time is, is short tonight. We've had a long agenda. I've, I've also got a letter from Sandy Miller that I think you received. She's another local dog trainer who spoke out about how many of her clients have adopted puppies and dogs from breeders that end up getting sick. There's another issue where a breeder, to save money, and because they accidentally breed sibling dogs that are related. And this presents a whole bunch of genetic issues. And I haven't even touched on the issue of how these backyard breeders in your community will involve more complaints. The dogs will be barking. There will be more health hazards. And lastly, I've got another statistic, which is about unspayed male dogs account for ninety percent of the dog bites. And that's a national statistic. I'm sure the statistic is probably very similar here in our valley. So this is also a public hazard to be breeding more dogs that aren't spayed and neutered and probably never will be. They get loose, they hurt somebody, they can even kill a person. So it's a serious health hazard to our, the humans in our community. Thank you very much for your attention to this matter.
Thank you very much, Janet. Anybody else?
I will call on Terry Toussaint next. Terry, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you for flashing the unmute sign for me. I am the legislative liaison for the Kennel Club of Palm Springs. We have a prospective member who was going to attend the meeting today, who is a resident of Desert Hot Springs. However, he suffered a traumatic personal issue yesterday and was unable to attend. The reason for my attending was to urge you to do what you actually have done, which is to delay consideration of the ordinance until we could discuss with AKC some of the issues that AKC sees that we think could be resolved so that we could go forward with an ordinance that would be able to be supported by everybody, including the dog breeding community and, and the American Kennel Club. Briefly, I would like to say to some of the previous speakers, if they look at the ordinance and they look that it only grants permits to those who have qualified for the AKC bred by heart, just about all of the issues of raised, they've raised are addressed, and that is why Desert Hot Springs has wisely chosen to use that as a major qualification for the breeder permit. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you for inviting me to speak.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Toussaint. Who else?
Next, I will call on Israel Rivera. Mr. Rivera, are you there?
Yes, you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello. Well, as you're aware, my name is Israel Rivera. I lived in the DHS my whole life. I remember how bad it before the no breeding ordinance. Don't get me wrong, it's still bad. The community does help in. But I see DHS going backwards, allowing this to go forward. It's like we turn a blind eye to it. You can even, let me give an example. Even when I graduated high school back in oh-four, there's, I used to walk from DHS High all the way up to Cork Hill, I'm sorry, not Cork Hill, to Merkle Road, which is about a little under a mile. And I would be chased by dogs. There's always been a dog issue. Not a barking issue. A, I have to run to get away from it because there's always been a dog problem in this, in this city. And for some reason, we tend to turn a blind eye on it. You can even go on the Desert Hot Springs Neighborhood Watch or Neighborhood Group, and you'll see all the husks terriers always being found. But and even Kat, you know, on this, it's not, it it's obviously an ongoing issue. And I, I just, I have a lot of faith in, in the city. I know the city has gone a long way since my days back from, from early the two thousands to when I was in high, middle school and high school. And even though I finished college, I still came back. And not because I had to, because I love my city. I love my community. I love, and I just have faith. We can go forward. Do the science in this and the research to see what's right. To me, it's a black and white issue. And I just hope that a lot of, a lot of residents speak up, because I've had issues in the past, and I was chased by dogs. So I it, it, it's not that I'm biased, it's just I know what I went through. People still go through it. And I just hope there could be change. And you know, I wish everybody the best. And I just hope we can all collaborate together and move forward with this. And again, I just, I, I urge to to vote no. And, you know, thank you for my time, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Anybody else?
The last speaker we have is Mr. Jim Barrow from earlier that we weren't able to connect. We can try this one more time.
Sure.
Okay, doesn't seem like we're able to connect. That was the last speaker, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and thank all the speakers. We're taking all of your comments to heart. There's no question about that. One of the things I can tell you that I should tell you is that you're, of the people here on the dais, which we're not on the dais, but the virtual dais, we're all dog lovers. And we all want to do what's best. It's just difficult at times to figure out what that is when you have a lot of conflicting voices. So we'll continue this conversation, I'm sure, at some point. With that, if there's nothing else, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Okay, thank you all very much.